I'd like to call this meeting in the Springborough Board of Education Board. Roll call, please.
Malone.
Here.
Stuckey.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Fab.
Here.
Colange.
Here.
Would you all please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item 1.2, adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Anderson, is there a second? Ms. Fab, roll call, please.
Malone.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Fab. Colange.
Yes. Motion passes 5-0. 1.3, approval of the January 14, 2016 meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Yes.
Ms. Fab, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Anderson, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Malone.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Fab. Colange.
Yes. Motion passes 5-0. At this time, item 2.1, public participation and introduction of guests. Is there a representative of the Springborough Education Association? Is there a representative of the Springborough Classified Employee Association? Public participation 2.3 was prearranged and no one has requested to speak. Item 2.4, public participation. Is there any one who would like to speak at this time on the agenda items? Okay. Item 2.5, school board recognition month. Mr. Petrie.
It is school board recognition month. And let me tell you, if anyone appreciates this new board, it's me. So we would just like to show our appreciation for all that you do. Much appreciated. We'll have a tonight. We have Mr. Anderson. Let's give them another round of applause.
You should make that a standing agenda.
That's right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Moving on, at this time, item 3, treasures report. Ms. Boy.
Yes, we're actually, this first item is for a donation for $19,800 from the Borough Fest. And I believe Todd wanted to introduce Dale Bruner and some other guests before that.
Yes, I'd like to say a few things. It's about a year in the making. Mr. Bruner approached me and we discussed how to festival here on school property. And I have to tell you, the amount of work these individuals put in as to make this happen was incredible. But they're definitely very structured business people and just how they're able to pull in donations, I was particularly amazed. So tonight, it is my pleasure for Mr. Bruner to be here to introduce a nice check to the school district. We greatly appreciate it.
First of all, thank you for allowing us some time tonight. We're here to give you some money, which is a good thing. We're here to represent Borough Family Fest and this community event goes back to 2009. It was originally called the Cook Family Fund Day. We decided to change the name to Borough Family Fest to really make it more and try to make it a bigger community event. We have some committee members here today that have been here since the very beginning. Tommy Myers has taken care of all of our food for us. Brent Bernard over there took care of a new event that we started this year, which was a little gambling. Joyce Cook is back there and she's taking care of almost everything that we've done across the board, from silent auction to helping out with the kids getting checked in this year. Mr. Ziegler is what we would call our fundraiser. He organized flag football and he's a transportation specialist that we all know. There's a couple of people that are not here tonight that I just want to make sure that you're aware of. Matt and Jen Mitchell. There's a people that give a lot of time to this event. Jen is our bookkeeper and I think we all know how important that is. She's the person behind the scenes that takes care of everything, that makes it easy for us. And then she also does our silent auction, which the silent auction is about a $10,000 moneymaker for us and so it's real important. Couple other people that are not here tonight, Tammy Chapman from A&amp;S Playzone. If you do not know them, if you haven't associated with them, they're just amazing. Since we started Cook Family Fund Day in 2009, they have given us something every single year. And this past year, she went above and beyond and we just really appreciate her. And then Mike Rentsch was our DJ all weekend long, which was, as much as it sounds like it's a pretty easy job, it wasn't. He was just continuously there and we just appreciate everything he did. You know, we consider ourselves, and we are, a support organization for the school. Our goal is to bring the community together. That's the whole idea of Borough Family Fest. The goal is to grow this event. We want to make sure that we're giving back to the schools as much as possible. I'll never forget, four or five years ago, the school board talked about doing a fundraiser to bring money in to support the schools. Well, what we did is we talked about it and we first of all, Cook Family Fund Day gave $100,000 to Wade Field to fix up that football field down there. And now our focus is to how do we give back to the schools? And we really, we concentrate on technology, of course, giving back to athletics and things that will progress our kids along here in school. So as we move forward here, I just, I need to thank our sponsors. Matt Castroucy was our title sponsor this year, which was very generous. B-Dubs here in town, Wade Insurance, John Stackler was huge, did a lot of legal stuff for us behind the scenes. Heisel Construction, Domino's Pizza, Sandy's Towing, and then also A&amp;S Playzone, of course. So this year, we're hoping to change the event to July 1st and 2nd. And we're, the goal of that is to provide some special events that we haven't seen here in a while in Springborough and we're excited about that. But just keep in mind, as we move forward here, Borough Family Fest is here to support the schools, to be a sounding board. We work very well with the boosters. Some of us are on the boosters here in town. We're just another way to give back money to the schools. So guys, anybody out there want to talk at all? Okay. Well, so with that said, here's a check for $19,800. Then there will be another $1,700 coming. One of our sponsors is getting us that money. So, okay. Thank you very much.
Again, on behalf of the Board of Education and the district and the community, thank you. Thank you for all the efforts that you all have put forth. What a tremendous gesture. And I know we're excited to work with you in the future to just make it better each and every day. Thank you very much. Okay. Is there a motion to approve this donation of $19,800 from Borough Fest? So moved. Okay. Mr. Colange, is there a second? Ms. Fab, roll call, please.
Malone.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Fab.
Yes.
Colange.
Yes. The motion passes 5-0. 3.2, approval of donation of $213.42 from the Ohio Energy Project. Is there a motion? So, Mr. Anderson, second?
Second.
Mr. Stuckey, roll call, please.
Malone.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Fab.
Yes.
Colange.
Yes. The motion passes 5-0. 3.2, approval of donation of $213.42 from the Ohio Energy Project. Is there a motion? So, Mr. Anderson, second?
Second.
Mr. Stuckey, roll call, please.
Malone.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Fab.
Yes.
Colange.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Item 3.3, moving on to 3.3 approval of December financials.
I'll go ahead and briefly touch on a few things. If anyone has any questions, feel free to jump in and ask. All this content that I'm going to be going over is under the tab, content, and it has the different reports. I'll touch on the cash flow report first. That'll start out with the sheet that has the borough type on the top. This is actually all funds. And I want to touch on that because we, a lot of the other reports that I deal with are on the general fund only because that's what our five-year is based off of. But this first sheet is all funds for the whole district. So that'll include your bond retirement fund, your food service fund, athletic funds, you know, we have grants, all of our other funds. So this first sheet shows, you know, higher balance because it's all funds, all cash and all funds that we have in the district. So the top portion, our depository, that's actually our cash in the bank. So as of the end of December, which we're almost finished with January right now, but as of the end of December, we had a little over $6 million in our actual cash. We have $5,233,000 at the end of December for our investments. So our total is about $10,516,000 total. But then when we go through the other reports that actually show how our general fund is doing, that's where you'll go to, if you're on Board Docs, for everybody here, we'll do the monthly estimate report. The monthly estimate report shows, sorry, what I've done is I've taken our full five-year forecast and put it down by object levels. And then I've kind of shown where the variance is on how we're doing upwards or downwards based off of our projections. This is a little tricky to do because I've basically just taken the entire year and divided it by 12. But there's obviously things that happen that aren't going to be exactly each month. So for instance, we've had two months where we've had three payrolls in one month. So that's obviously going to set your variances higher or lower whichever month those three payrolls hit. As well, if you look at the, sorry, you guys can't all see this online, but under the benefits, it shows that we're way below, we have about $400,000 to the good in our benefits. But a lot of that is because our HSA payment didn't hit till this month. So when I bring the financials for next month, you'll see that number drastically drop because we had to pay out the first part of our HSA. But then pretty much everything else is a timing issue. Our supplies and capital right now, we're showing a little bit over. But that's because we have to purchase that stuff at the beginning of the year and then the second semester, a lot of expenses for our high school come out for the second half of the year. So those variances will actually start to close down February, March, April, May, and June. Those expenses will be a lot less, so it'll close that gap and make us more on. So overall, we're trending just exactly how I expected and we're actually trending lower than we were last year this time. So we may even have a larger cash balance at the end of the year, but it's going to be close. So I don't know if you guys have any questions, but right now we're looking pretty good.
Is that primarily in the purchase services that we're projecting lower?
Purchase services is projecting lower and I actually expect that to maybe stay. We have to be careful because anytime a kid comes in, I know I came to you guys in December of last year, we had a few kids move into the district that had some high needs. So our expenses actually went up quite a bit. But so far, as long as everything stays reasonably how we are, we're actually trending lower. We have a new plan in place this year for sub-costs and we've been watching them very closely. So our sub-costs are down and we also haven't had much snow. So a lot of the overtime and some of the, you know, people who call in for snow and things, we don't have our sub-costs as high for those either. The overtime's a big one right now, which is, we are trending low on our salaries as well and we think a lot of that is from that as well. So I think we're going to end up, I think, a little more positive. And then when I bring in the May forecast too, you will also see we'll be having more tax revenue from the annual update. So we're actually going to even be looking better at the end of the year and actually through the next several years. So.
How are we helping control the stuff, amount that went out?
Well, we have, well, we basically, you might be able to touch on this a little bit better, but he brought me plans. He had each building given analysis of everything that they were going to need subs for for the whole year. If it's outside of that, unless it's some huge monumental thing, then we're not doing anything else outside of that.
What we do is with our instructional plans, like we talked about today with all the meetings we have for RTI, the 18th SST, the principal budget out, how many of those meetings we're going to have this year. In special education with Lee and Ken, we went to a calendar and set all of the IEP meetings one year in advance and they're in certain days in each building. Now, it's the first year we've done that, so we tell parents, this is the day we have them in each building and we have all of our resource people there. What that does, it allows to have much more elaborate IEP meeting. The difficulty with that is those are the days we have. So we can't hardly deviate from that. But it has saved a lot of money being able to do that. Plus with all our instructional plans, we do it in advance, how much those are going to cost so that we can budget out anything outside of that. The principals have to create a special project and present it to Tara and I and we either accept it or deny it, wanted to.
So it's fair to say that barring anything sort of unforeseen at this point, we are trending in such a way that we should have some.
Well, the high school principals here, he hears we're under budget, so he's going to take it something.
But yes, we are, we are definitely trending favorably and I believe it'll continue just from everything that I've seen so far. When we have the purchase order cutoffs though, which will come around March, I'll have a better estimate of, sometimes I'll get people wanting to do things, but they will try to go as long as they can in the year and if they see, okay, good, we've saved this much money, good, now I want to do that thing I've been trying to plan for. So sometimes, we have to look at those a lot of times too and say, is that really something that's going to push goals and things like that? But no, we're doing, we're doing well. It's just getting a little tight on the cash right now.
I was going to say, were you going to talk a little bit about what we're projecting in January?
Yes. We're almost done with January now and we, we're going to, I'm assuming we're going to have about $2.5, $2.4 million before we go into February. It's going to be tricky because our tax advances, and it's basically who pays their taxes early because, I mean, they'll be collecting February, March, April, May, and then delinquencies from then on. But what they do is as they collect, the board has approved, I can't think what I want to say, it allows them to send us the advances as they come in. So that helps us because the moment they get them in, they turn them around within a couple of days and send them to us. So we'll probably get about $400,000, $500,000 in the first week of February sometime, depending on if the same people last year paid this year at the same time. But we have a payroll February 12th and that'll be about 1.2 million. So it gets real tricky in our office until about mid-February and then we'll start getting several million in cat and mouse advances to taxes. And then it'll get a little bit better, but it does get tricky. And as your cash balance dwindles each year, you know, the five-year, as the cash balance gets less, those cash flows get trickier and trickier during those times where we're not receiving tax advances. So.
Is there anything, any update on the pipeline situation? I have heard anything for several months.
I haven't either. I talked to Matt Nolan and he said they usually reconvene in the spring and start talking about their next point of action for the, since it's a biennial budget, they still get back annually and make adjustments to that, even though the main budget's only every two years. So they're hoping to possibly get it in that mid-biennium year update. And if so, that they start to convene around the springtime, but they won't even talk about it until then and then we won't know where they're going to go from until after that. So I'm.
So the bottom line is we shouldn't really.
Don't, you know, definitely don't project getting it, but I'm hoping it will come.
Any other questions or discussions? Okay, is there a, is there a motion to accept the treasure report as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Anderson, second?
Second.
Mr. Colange, roll call, please.
Malone.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Fab.
Yes.
The motion passes 5-0. Super maintenance report, Mr. Petrie, policy revisions?
Yes. These are the same policies we talked about the last meeting and first reading, so they have gone to the second reading. I really didn't get any questions this week. The ones I did get, in essence, we're leaving our policies broad so that we're not too zeroed down. We have to police everything, but really nothing that needs to be changed at this time. We actually had a policy meeting yesterday. We'll be bringing board policy. Really good committee group. It was a good meeting. I thought it was.
Okay. Is there a motion then to accept the policy revisions as presented? Ms. Fab, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Colange?
Oh, Stuckey.
No, Mr. Stuckey.
Got him.
Thank you. Okay, roll call, please.
Malone.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Fab.
Yes.
Policies and our approved 5-0. 4.2, approval of the School Resource Officer contract?
Yes. We, actually, the city has already adopted this as well. This is the contract we talked about that Chief Prideoff and I developed and went through. So with your approval tonight, we will have a School Resource Officer contract.
Is there a motion? Mr. Anderson, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Fab, roll call, or questions? Questions, please. Roll call, please.
Malone.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Fab.
Yes.
The motion passes 5-0. 4.3, approval of the out-of-state trip for the Winter Guard?
Yes, we discussed this at the last board meeting. This is for our band. And they definitely gave a detailed synopsis of where they'll be going that evening. So with your approval tonight, they will be on their way.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Stuckey, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Colange, questions? Roll call, please.
Malone.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Fab.
Yes.
The motion passes 5-0. Request for approval of the Winter Guard.
That's the next.
No, you're going to say 4.4.
4.4.
Okay. Okay. Approval of the program of studies.
Yes, we actually sent this out to all of you the day after the board meeting. We did get some feedback. We were able to meet with Ms. Cook, who unfortunately can't be here tonight. She was diagnosed with the flu. We have made some changes, but what we bring to you tonight is what we would like for final approval. We do know there's still a few typos in that. It's a massive document for those of you who are here. We can, I can change those by board policy if we run into those, but the actual contents of that document will remain the same upon your approval. So with your approval this evening, that will allow us to schedule our students much earlier this year or on time, would you say, Mr. Porter? So that hopefully by the time they leave, we're able to find where they're at in classes.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the 16, 17 program of studies? So, Mr. Stuckey, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Anderson, discussion?
I'd just like to say something. It was me that had the questions and I just appreciate Kyle smiling. I appreciate the time that he and Mrs. Cook took and, and Mr. Rose and Mr. Petrie. Because I did have, and it wasn't, it wasn't that there was things wrong, it was just I had questions about things. And they took a lot of time to sit down with me and work through and I had, because I had two in high school, I worked through the program of studies as a parent. And I just had a lot of feedback from a parent's perspective and they were incredibly receptive. They went through literally every single point that I had and they were very, very open to what, the questions that I had. And I then to a pulse meeting, which is a group of parents at the high school in the middle of, when I had given my feedback and they were working on things. And the, what, what the pulse meeting, a lot of the communication there was the same, some of the same things that I had said. And the team has agreed to come back together after registration to look at it even further with some of the way that some of the things are set up and just things to continue to help the process become even better. And I appreciate that because we could look at it and just say, it's done, it's all in there, move on. But instead, they're open to feedback and they were willing to, there was a lot, I guess Mrs. Cook accounted, there was 43 little things that I had had questions with. And they went through it every single point and addressed it with me. So I just appreciate the time because I know it took a lot of time out of their day to do that. So I wanted to thank you for that and it 100% has my vote because I feel very comfortable with what you guys did together. So, thank you.
Well, Ms. Fab does bring up a good point. We are going to have a committee with parents, community members, and students to continue looking at it because it's always a work in progress. You did program of studies for years, Dr. Moore, and I'm sure you'll attest to that, but it is a massive document. That's for certain with college credit plus and all these dropped out things. It has just grown and become more complicated, so.
As a parent of elementary students, yes, I was very overwhelmed by that. I definitely had several years to brush up before. But I would echo what you said. I appreciate all the effort that went into reviewing it and I also appreciate the willingness to continue to look at this after we go forward with this one, to continue that improvement process. But I know there were some things, some broader ideas and themes that were discussed that I'd like to see us pursue. So I appreciate everyone attempting this to address it.
Nice job, Mr. Porter.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Malone.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Fab.
Yes.
The motion passes 5-0. Okay, 4.5, novels for approval?
Yes, we actually brought these a while back. Ms. Cook, of course, her secondary specialist can't be here. She's ill tonight, so I wanted to bring these tonight. Somehow they got left off and I spoke to her today and she said, you know, the teacher really needs them. It's more of a secondary level issue. So I wanted to bring those for approval tonight. To get these, I think it's five different books approved, they did go through the process of how we, the process of adoption. They had teachers, community members, retired teachers, librarian, and various readers throughout the community that read these books, gave their input, then they came back, gathered that information. And so with that, they felt these books fit the criteria and they liked to get those approved so we can use them throughout the.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the novel?
So moved.
Mr. Stuckey, is there a second? Mr. Anderson, please.
Just one question. Will they be used this school year or is this for next? So did, okay, between now and school year.
They're going to get those ordered. They come in rather quickly. They're not your normal textbooks. They're more of a novel. We've probably, it was questionable if we technically had to bring them, but I felt the best to go through the process because to stay in time to have a book out there that someone disagrees with, difficult. And at that level, with the level of books those are, you never know when someone might disagree, but nonetheless, we did have a lot of people look at those.
Now, do students buy these? Or is the district buying?
We have a, on some of them, we have a novels fee. And so they do buy this based on, it all depends if it's junior higher in high school. So based on if we have a fear not, it goes towards purchasing those. If they are the paper type books and they are purchased with a fee, the students are able to write in them, so they get to keep the book.
So, yeah. Next, roll call, please.
I have a question.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Um, with these books, can you just help me understand the process? Like, at the beginning of the year, clearly there's a lot of books that are ordered and you kind of had your plan for the year. How is it that, like at the, because these are all, well, six through 12, why are we ordering books in the middle of the year rather than just doing it at the beginning? I just don't understand the process.
Those books, they actually started that process probably last May and then over, I know, towards the end of the summer, I had a parent bring one of the books and say, this is from Mrs. Cook, I read it. It was pretty good. So they continually are reading those a year in advance most of the time and then once And then once they, because these are new. They're not books that we've already had.
Right.
Once they get those in, it's this time of the year the teacher is saying, these are books we're interested in, so they go into the process. So once they're read and they're approved, then we're able to purchase them.
Why would we not approve them before the school year so the teacher would know whether they have them to use to fit within a standard?
Right.
What if we came and said, three of these books are not going to work? Then they're starting the process over again, the end of January, to meet a standard for this year. By the time you get that process through, it's April or May. And how are you going to meet that standard that year?
It's always the goal, but sometimes it doesn't work out that way.
Make it work.
I'll get right on it. So it's, it's all.
Okay, so the goal is to have it.
That's the goal. Because you have to understand, this has not always been the process. But with just the controversy over books in the common core, I won't be able to read these books.
I agree.
Do not have any of these books that they talk about in the common core. These are books that fit the culture of springers.
So it sounded like we could have waited until next year.
We could, yes.
When Andrea says, the teacher really wants that, why not get that?
Exactly.
So we have other things that would have fit within those standards?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, okay.
And again, the teachers teach to the standards. They don't teach to a particular book.
Right.
So even though they have these, they're a clear differentiation process. They may have a couple of books that are tied along based on the level of some of the readers.
And also, just so you know, some of our hiring does not get done until August. So, and we do have like long-term subs, for example, where at the high school, we've had several, particularly in language arts, where they take a leave of absence and it's another teacher coming in. And they may choose, given what input from the students and knowing what the standards are, they may then choose and ask Andrea and Kyle whether they can purchase, get those books to fit the curriculum before the end of the year. And we have had several of those circumstances between August and now.
Yeah, I do think this process will slow down a lot of this was purchasing to get caught up. Because as the new learning standards came in, but at one point, we focused more on literary text and now it's informational text. So that's why we're having to go through this process with different types of books because the teaching is different now.
I guess I'm trying to get my mind direct around two. And I know Mr. Martin and I have had this discussion. If you have a kid in seventh grade, a ninth grade, an eleventh, you buy the same book three times as you're part of your textbook fees. So if we have new books coming in mid-year, that can't be part of the textbook fees. So I'm trying to understand the whole process with the financial piece because that can't be part of one of the write-in ones, I would think, because those have already been paid for. Does that make sense of where my question is?
It'd be easier if we just sat down with you, went through the process. When you get to our high school, it's like a mini college campus to some extent. So we'd have to really sit down with you and go through the process of how these things go together.
All right, I voted yes.
Any other questions? All right, roll call, please.
Malone.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Bab.
Yes.
Balanque.
Yes.
The motion passes five oh. All right, five point zero, Director of Human Resources, Special Education Report.
Yes, at this time, we are looking for approval for the superintendent's office of the personnel items as presented. We are very proud that there are only five tonight. We love January in HR. And unfortunately, February is around the corner. But we ask for approval of those five items, please.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the personnel report? Mr. Anderson, is there a second? Mrs. Bab, roll call, please.
Malone.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Bab.
Yes.
Balanque.
Yes.
The motion passes five oh. Business Management's Report, Mr. Penau.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for your consideration, recommend approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Warren County Career Center to utilize our properties to shelter students in case of emergencies.
Is there a motion? Mr. Stuckey, is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Bab, questions?
This is a normal thing we do every year.
Right, right. Okay, roll call, please.
Malone.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Bab.
Yes.
Balanque.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes five oh. Item six point two, approval for construction of the playground at Miracle Field.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we do have a presentation on this before we go ahead and request your approval of it.
Mr. Martin is jumping into his other job now. What is that other job you had, Mr. Martin?
First of all, if we could reverse back to the Borough Family Fest, a couple of our people came in late because I personally thought this was at the high school. So Steve Hecht ran our fish fry for us this year, the Hecht Family Fish Fry at the outing. And then behind you in the bullpen, it's Tammy Chapman. From A and S Play Zone, right there. I apologize again to them for sending them the wrong location. So we're going to switch gears and talk about another passion that we have. I'm actually here representing the YMCA of Grendayton. And Adam Wilhelm is here with me. The Miracle Field was established back in two thousand nine. We opened play in September of two thousand nine. In two thousand seven, Brian Karati, a local businessman in town who actually lives in Springboro part-time, then lives out of state a while, and Mark Durso assisted in helping me raise one million dollars to build the Miracle Field. The project took place, it took about six months to build. We, first thing we did was try to search for land around our community, not only in Springboro, Centerville, all the way up to Dayton, to try to find a place to build this. At the time, Dr. Baker, George Long, and the board felt it very important for us to have it here in Springboro. One of the best things I think they did was, is they said that we could put it right in front of the junior high. And for me, that was important for the fact is that we wanted kids and families to be able to see the Miracle Field, to understand what it was about, and understand and appreciate everything they have. So the Miracle Field started way back then. When we raised the million dollars, the goal was, is that we were to set aside a portion of the money. So we set aside thirty thousand dollars and it actually sits in your bank account here. That money is set aside in case there's any damages to the field, that we can take care of it without any, any issues. So back to the project at hand, back in two thousand nine, our goal was to actually build this playground right then. But we decided to wait a little bit just to make sure of how the field was used, the participation of the kids, and the different types of disabilities that we were dealing with at the field to know what to build, to build. So what has happened now, and we're lucky enough, Tommy Myers, who was also the cook for Borough Family Fest, is a, a good cook, is also a big supporter and a volunteer for the Miracle Field. And also Dawn Hoback, who is not here tonight. She is a person that really has taken on control of the Miracle Field on a volunteer basis. And then, of course, Adam, the Y, is the one that actually oversees the projects. So what we're getting ready to do is, Adam's going to present the project and what we're looking to do, we of course still have to fundraise. So I want to make sure you understand that. We are going to be out fundraising for this project. So what you're really doing is giving us approval to build the project. It is on the original plans that was back in two thousand eight, technically, when we started to look through this. But I'll let Adam go ahead and walk through the project. All right. Basically, what we're doing is, like as Dale said, Brian Karati was a big person involved in this, the beginning of everything. He came to me and said, hey, where, where we at, what's the chance that we can get a playground? So I started thinking about it, looking at it. And I feel that not only will it benefit Miracle League, but the school district itself, for you guys to be able to bring kids down there, use this playground, and also communities all around us. Here on overall playground site, it's important for all children to have variety of sensory experiences for healthy development. The field, of course, is located in front of the junior high, and the playground will go right behind it. So you've got the concession stand, and then you'll have the playground. The design already has, down at the field, already has the fence around it, which is a very popular thing that they do at all the fields, especially for kids with autism. Trees are located there also for shade. And then the overall playground design here. This is the main structure of the playground. It has a wide ramp, so wheelchairs can go all the way through that. You also have a crawl tunnel for kids if they want to go through that way to get up to the access. Once you go up the ramp, this is the sway swings, it's a pretty new structure that they have out. Kids can sit on in there, but that also has two spots for wheelchairs. So it just sways back and forth, but kids in wheelchairs can get that experience. You have the rock wall that you can interrupt through there to go down the slide. And then some of the freestanding elements here. Has two swings. It has a bucket seat, though, that also has a harness that goes over top of it. So for example, a kid in a wheelchair that can't move, can't feel his legs or whatnot, they can get in here, be transferred in there, and get that experience of actually swinging. Here we have the Wii Saw, which is basically just like a Peter Potter. It's got four molded bucket seats. Dogs can use it, teens can use it, and obviously the kids can use this. You have the Omni Spin, the Saddle Spinner. The Saddle Spinner is just a one-person, can sit on it and move it back or move around. The Omni Spin, it's basically like what a merry-go-round was back in our day. But here, it's low to the ground, so there's no one can get hurt. And also, you can put somebody in a wheelchair into this so they can get the experience. Zip Cruise, this is my favorite thing. When I went out to Minnesota to look at this company that builds these playgrounds, I got to experience one of these, absolutely awesome. On the Zip Cruise, though, the, has a bucket seat, just like the swings, where it has the harness that comes over it. So ten years ago, you never would have thought a kid with special needs in a wheelchair would be able to get a zip line. So this is really cool. The next thing is the sensory wall. And this is basically just a wall for kids with autism. It's a very popular piece of equipment. I know we have a lot of kids in autism in Miracle League and at the school. So I want to make sure this piece of the equipment was on the playground also. Overall, this playground has many opportunities for play for any child, regardless of their medical diagnosis. The total cost of this project is going to be one thousand, or one hundred seventy-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars. And then I just want to thank you guys for listening to us. If you've got any questions for me or Dale. So the first thing that's going to happen is we will start the fundraising. We received a gift at the grand opening of the Miracle Field back in two thousand nine, thirty thousand dollars. We were fortunate enough to have a whole bunch of Cincinnati Reds that came to the event. And one of their friends wrote a check that day for thirty grand. So, and it was for specifically to break the playground. So really, there's a hundred and forty-five thousand is what we need right now. So with your permission, what we're doing, we're going out and fundraising. We'll come back when this is complete, just to let you know about construction. But we're just asking for approval to get started on that. Thanks, Governor.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion then to accept this report? So moved. Balanque, your second?
Second.
So Bab, further discussion, any questions or comments?
I have a question. How would that work during the day? You made reference a couple of times to kids at the school using it. How would it be used with our special needs kids?
Well, just so you know, the school owns it. We raise the money, but the school owns the piece of property. We built that when Dr. Baker was here and the intention of letting the school work was that we were able to use the land, but it's still, the school owns it, so you could use it at any time.
So it's up to the school as to how that.
Right.
I didn't realize that.
The YCA is the manager of the field, so we call the scheduling. So Adam is to bring in different groups, adult with, adult disabilities or kids with disabilities or whatever. And Adam manages it, and we do the fundraising.
Okay, thanks, I didn't realize that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Again, good luck.
Thank you. It's going to be their fall season. Show up, show up in the fall, it's going to be there.
I think one of the things that I love about Miracle Field is that you guys include the whole community, whether you have somebody with special needs or not. You guys do an amazing job of including, whether it's school teams, club teams, just anybody in the community that wants to get involved. And it's people, it's not just your athletes. It's everybody that loves to go out there and be a buddy. We have the shirts at home that say Buddy from where my kids did it, and they loved it. So I just think that whole concept and to continue to provide more stuff, you know, more equipment for them, I just think it's such a positive for Springboro. And I'm thrilled that you found someplace here and not someplace else. Because I think it's a huge, huge asset to Springboro. So I appreciate all the work that you've done.
Adam really does the school work now.
Roll call, please.
Malone.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Bab.
Yes.
Balanque.
Yes.
The motion passes five oh. Item seven point oh, Board of Education Report. Seven point one is the Board President requests the appointment of members to district committees facilitated by the superintendent. Let's get a motion, then we can go ahead and discuss it. Motion, please. Mr. Anderson, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stuckey, is there a discussion? The committees, we have approximately twelve committees that are our superintendent facilitated committees. Our goal was to have at least two board, no more than two board members per committee. The committee, the board members shared with myself and Mr. Petrie some of their potential committees they'd like to serve on. And then we went ahead and put together what you have here. So any discussion or questions or anything?
You did a good job.
Hey, thank you. Okay, if there's no discussion, then roll call, please.
Malone.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Bab.
Yes.
Balanque.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes five oh. Okay, item number eight, work session. Okay, we'll take a ten-minute break?
Mr. Martin out here is going to coach the dogs. You work every night, you go home.
We're going to make it a five-minute break. I was kind of nudged up here. Eight point one. Before we, we went to the, to the work session items, we are going ahead and. Before we go into the work session items, we're going to try a little bit of a different approach this year in effort to improve public participation on work session items. So what we're going to do is after each work session item, then I will go ahead and ask the public if they have any particular questions or comments related to that item. If so, wonderful, we will, we will hear them at that time. If not, then we'll go ahead and move on to the next item. So eight point two, committee reports. Are there any committee reports that are seeking from native committees? Mr. Petrie, Mrs. Boyd?
We have a policy committee, and both Ms. Bab and Mr. Stuckey were present. Worked out really well. We're going to not necessarily slow down the process, but make sure that everyone on the committee is able to truly give input. Because those committees don't make decisions. They, in essence, give me their feedback that I recommend to you. So that is one of the, with superintendent committees, it's a little different like that. If it were a board committee, they could make decisions. So it went pretty well. We reviewed, I think, six different policies. Our harassment policies, looked at our tobacco policy. We're starting, we're going to look at our standards-based evaluation for teacher policy. And then in our next one, we are going to be looking at the policy that addresses athletes being held accountable three hundred and sixty-five days a year for many types of drug or alcohol use. So we have quite a lot ahead of us, but it was convenient.
Very good. Okay, discussion or questions on that? Eight point three, Makerspace Discussion, Mr. Miller?
Yes, actually, I'm going to, Mrs. Cook is going to be here. One of the things our secondary specialist does is she looks for innovative programs that are twenty-first century-based to bring to the district. I typically, she always update these types of things because I love this type of stuff. As a teacher, I have a background in science. And actually, I taught fourth grade science, just like Mr. Miller does. And so we've been working over the past year on a Makerspace project. We've involved teachers, administrators, we've had community members in. And Mr. Miller and several five points teachers have really headed this up. Basically, what we're looking at is how we can incorporate this into our specials schedule. When I say specials, I'm meaning like art, music, P, computer lab, things like that. The purpose of specials, and that's what I want you to think about a moment. Why did we ever have art, music, PE, and things like that to begin with? And really, the purpose of those is to involve students in problem-solving, critical thinking, hands-on, minds-on type learning and project-based learning. So one of the things we're looking at now is called Makerspace. And what I really like about Makerspace is it's very twenty-first century, but it focuses on STEAM, science, technology, engineering, art and/or aerospace, math and medical. And it's something we're looking at throughout the district, but it's not often found in the elementaries like it needs to be. And in a community with a, what is it, a ninety-eight point four percent graduation rate and almost ninety-seven percent of our kids going on to some type of higher learning, we need to be introducing this at the earliest level so that we're developing problem-solving based students. So tonight, I have the great pleasure of introducing a fourth grade five points teacher, Mr. Eric Miller, and he is going to do the presentation. And I have to give him quite the commendation. He has done an outstanding, the kids love this. The kids love this, and you'll see the statistics of this. They are really excited about it. We've watched this over the last couple of years. And for us, in a high school, you want to have classes, the kids are interested in. It's no different at the elementary. So this is something that they're highly interested in. So Mr. Miller, the floor is yours. Here, let me give you my microphone.
I can use this one, I guess.
You got that one here?
Okay.
Hopefully, it doesn't make any noise. I hope not.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Petrie. I appreciate it. Also, thank you, Mrs. Griffin, for your support in helping this. Thank you, board members, for taking time out of your day to listen to what I'm excited about. And you'll have to excuse me. I'm used to teaching nine and ten-year-olds, so I like to show videos. So this is a great, quick video that ties in great with makerspace.
Okay, that's ridiculous. It's so exciting. Let her read Lewis.
Play, a good joke can't hold on much longer. Everybody ready?
Go, go.
No. I didn't know. I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
You failed.
It was possible. It's not true.
Outstanding. Ah, I feel better.
From needing you learn.
From six days? Not so much.
I give up every time I fail. I never would have made the meatball cannon.
I never would have made my fireproof pants. Still working out the kinks.
Like my husband always says.
So I really enjoy what the mom says. With failure, you learn. With success, not so much. So we really focus in makerspace. It's been an after-school program that started last year about this time, and we've really built it up. And we focus on failure a lot. And there is an acronym many of you may have heard, first attempt in learning. So failure is important, but it's not that we stop at failure. It's what you do to succeed after that. It goes along well with what Dr. Carol Dweck from Stanford, oh no. Dr. Carol Dweck from Stanford has been researching growth mindset versus fixed mindset. With growth mindset, anyone can learn anything. I really like the second one. When I'm frustrated, I persevere. In the classroom, I see students that struggle with division. I want students that are able to persevere through that rather than throw their hands up, get aggravated, and quit. So we really focus on this concept with growth mindset and challenging yourself and continuing to learn through the process and focusing on the process rather than just tell me I'm smart and that's good with fixed mindset. Tell me that you like my effort. So we really focus on that. And we work through the engineering design process, which is a very structured way to look at a problem, try to find a solution, and then design the solution. So I know when I was going through school, we talked mostly about the scientific method. A lot of that's shifting to the engineering design process. In the, I really like this graphic, because a lot of times, we get a problem or we're given a problem, and we try to get to the solution right away. But many times with the engineering design process, your first solution's not that great. So there's a focus on rethinking about your question, redesigning, and you might go around that process many times before you ever get to the solution. And oftentimes, when you get to a solution, it might solve a different problem than what you actually started with. So looking at what you already have and what's available to solve many different problems. We also utilize the four Cs, which many Fortune five hundred companies and higher-level education facilities are looking for, for hiring employees, for looking. These are soft skills that are hard to teach, but creativity, collaboration, working well with others is really important. I really like the definition, the second definition for critical thinking here, the ability to ask meaningful questions. That's tough, to ask the right questions to get to the solution. We'll show some examples here in a minute of giving a problem of what we've done in makerspace. Well, if they're building a tower out of popsicle sticks, and they're only given so many popsicle sticks and so much tape, well, a good question is, can I tape it to the wall? You know? So like those kids that are able to think, critically think through the problem of how else can I get better support? It's really good to see, and communication of sharing their thoughts and ideas. We continue to focus on, this is in the Ohio New Standards for Science, the Ohio Cognitive Demands for Science. I read them kind of along the lines of Bloom's Taxonomy. The bottom level is recalling accurate science. That's very important, and that's what a lot of our science is based on in a typical science classroom. Learn this, I'll test you on it, tell me what the answers are. But as you move up, and these are all very important skills of interpreting communication of science concepts, demonstrating knowledge, and then that top one is designing actual solutions to problems. And just looking at TED Talks or other, what amazing teachers around the world are doing, students are solving world problems, and there's no reason that our students can't do that as well. As Mr. Petrie said, this has been a very popular program. It has become very popular. Last year, we started, we had fifty-five students sign up in about twelve hours. The next session, we wanted to expand it, because there was a lot of community members in our school that wanted more people. So we tried, well, maybe we'll do eighty kids. It filled up in about an hour. It was fifty-four minutes, I think. And then we were like, ah, that, it wasn't conducive to have eighty kids to get the projects done that we wanted and get that one-on-one with the kids that we felt necessary. So we dropped it back to fifty-five students, but it filled up in four minutes. So we were taking first come, first served at that time, and it was like, they said that, or many of the parents said, it's like buying a ticket to a concert, just to go to an after-school club.
Should have turned it on.
Yeah, we should have. So this year, we changed it to have a lottery system. So we gave about a week to sign up. The first session in the fall, we had a hundred and twenty-eight students sign up for fifty spots. So at our school, we had nine hundred and seventy-one students, I think. So it's about thirteen percent of the population that signed up for an after-school club to pay money to stay and hang out and make stuff. And then this last session that we just got done with, today was the last day, actually, we limited it to twenty-five students, because we were focused entirely on 3D printing, using Chromebooks to design with a computer aided drafting software. There are a couple of examples over here of some of the buildings that students made to fit into the community that they designed. We kind of eliminated second grade, so we only had sixty students sign up for that session. I see makerspace as benefiting all students. I've seen it, that students that are in a gifted program can be very successful. Also, students that are in special needs classes or students that aren't your typical great students in class, whether they've been in my class or talking to their teachers, they're like, yeah, they're a little squirrely, but if you let them get hands-on and communicate and collaborate, some of those are my best makerspace kids. They're just phenomenal. 3D printer projects have been great. And I'd also like to see us work with other community or community outreach, like Dayton Children's. These were just made, this is a side project, you can just look at these if you'd like. Those are, I guess, name badges, but students in our building that aren't able to write their own name in our special needs program, I've been working with some teachers that we designed, they used to make them out of like foam board. I was like, well, we can do that with our 3D printer. So we've been creating their name, and these are in the beginning stages, because I'm trying to get the right program and get the right thickness for them to be able to use. But now those students are able to, with help, write their own name on their paper, which is really cool. So I'd like to see that and see what else we could do with, like Dayton Children's and stuff like that. I would love to develop guest makers to be able to come into this building. I have a good friend that's a glass artist, just seeing what he does and sharing that with students. And then I think we could also connect with the community by hosting a maker fair, where Barnes and Noble just did one recently, kind of an expo to show off what some of our students can create and build those connections with home. I have just some quick slides that are pictures of what some of our students have done. This is a marble run. So this works great with the engineering design process. Well, you can make a marble star here and go to here, but what else can you do? Can you make it do a loop? Can you, you know, do other things? You'll see a lot of engaged students in these and some iPad programs that we use. I think that's a making their own video game. Lots of kinetic art. These were mobiles that they made, so using balance and artistic abilities to create what they like, duct tape creations. Instamorph is really cool. It's a plastic that if you get it hot, it changes, it makes it lick, I don't know, soft enough to change, and you put it back in ice water and it changes to solid. But what's written, it turns really hard, but then you can put it back in hot water and mold it again into something new. It's really neat. Green screen applications, so it looks like they're somewhere. There's a little guy right there that was a troublemaker. Right there. He was one that was a trouble.
They love the program.
Scribble bots are great with electric motors and these actually, you can't see my hand, these actually like spin. There's a motor on them that makes them draw on the paper. LED lights are great. They're really inexpensive. Batteries are really cheap for those. But seeing what kids can create and solve when they're given those materials is really inspiring. Here's just from today, actually, a couple of the makerspace 3D sessions that they built. So they were creating a community. There's a hospital here. They were actually lighting them with LED lights today, putting all those things in. And then this is my favorite slide. This is what I stress, this is what we work for. Failure is the road to success, and another student put, if I fail, that's okay. And that's been really inspiring to see and what students have been able to do. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And if you have any questions, we wanted to show you that tonight. We may be looking at bringing that in next year, possibly to fourth and fifth grade, and wondering if there's entertaining questions you may have if you have any this time.
All right.
Will we be having more discussion about what you just said there in future meetings?
Yes. Yes. Well, you know, thank you again, Mr. Miller.
No problem.
Thank you. One person I did neglect to introduce, Eric, I didn't see you were here, but if you could come up a minute, Mrs. Griffin. Come on up. You know, Mrs. Griffin is the assistant principal of Five Points Elementary. And the principal there had to have surgery this year, so she has been on her own, but we never recognize administrators for the great job she's, they do. She's done just an outstanding job, so let's give her a round of applause.
I have something else I'd like to say. At Capitol Conference, he and another teacher that we lost to another district presented, we won't talk about that, presented, and it was so cool to see Springboro represented there, that they were looking at something that we're doing, saying, this is so awesome that we want to show other teachers in the state of Ohio what's happening. And so I went to their session, and I was, at first, I was there just because I was going to try to catch a couple of pictures for Karen, so that she could use them. And I was totally like, absolutely not, I'm going to sit here the whole time. And I did this project, and as they were talking, I was like, it was like I was in the body of a second grader, because they're talking and saying, you know, some people need the directions, and so they read through, and some people, and I'm thinking, they gave me this baggie of stuff, and I'm supposed to make a light go. And I'm not a science person. And so it was very frustrating for me. And so as they're talking, I'm like, I'm looking like an idiot, because I don't know what I'm doing, and blah, blah, blah. And as I'm moving these things around, it lit. And I was like, oh, oh my gosh! And there's that excitement, and I'm like, that right there is what it's about, is seeing the light go on for kids. And sometimes, even kids that aren't science kids are able to experience it, and reading the directions of what I was supposed to do wouldn't have gotten me anywhere. I had to actually hands-on do it. So it was so cool to hear the passion that they have, and this is just something they did on their own. Nobody told them, go put together a program. They just had such a passion for this, and then to see the stats of in four minutes, and I saw online, parents were livid that they did not get in that program, because it filled up so fast. I mean, it wasn't pretty. So to think about how, what an awesome job these teachers on their own, no extra pay, just they figured it out, that is just exemplary to me. And then to see them share this with other people in Ohio, you know, the other educators and librarians, I mean, there was lots of different people in different positions there. So it just made, it was a very proud moment as a person in Springboro to see you guys do that. You did an excellent presentation, so kudos to you.
Ms. Babb brought up a good point. Mason started this last year, and so we had one of our teachers, we need to go to Mason to start this there. So Mr. Miller is going to stay with us, in that bright future right here with us. And you're going to feel great about leading Mr. Springboro kids, so thank you so much.
Wonderful. Like I would say, both my kids love the program. I don't, they weren't able to get in the lottery this last time. But I can just echo what Lisa said, I appreciate the initiative, the fact that going out there and creating something like this, I just love that we're moving education forward. I just love to see that, and just so appreciative of the effort. And I'm interested in the discussion about whether this is something we can incorporate as a special going forward. I sort of casually mentioned that to the kids, their eyes lit up. They were so excited that that was even a possibility. So I just think it's wonderful.
Good.
I think it's good to have more of these discussions about what we can be bringing in that really excites kids, that it's not doing what we have to do. I texted him a picture the other night of my junior in high school who's in the Project Lead the Way program, and he has used that software that whatever they're doing at school on his own time, he's designed a bed that he's building, that he's going to put his gaming system in, and he totally has done this on his own, because that has energized him. And there's a lot of things that aren't exciting him right now, but that's something that had we not had Project Lead the Way, we would not even be close to this. But now, he's learned how to design it, he had to figure out all the wood on his own, he had to pay for it on his own, and now he's building it on his own, obviously with a little bit of help along the way. But that's the thing, is how to inspire these kids to really get what they love to do. And that's what I saw when I came and just observed the makerspace. These kids were just crazy excited about, what were, what are those spinner things that, the day that I went?
You know, it was just the ones that mark her?
Yes.
Those are scribble bots.
Scribble bots, that's what it was. And it was so neat to see, I mean, one kid was in tears. You could tell probably he was a highly academic kid, so he wasn't used to failure, and he was in tears over it. And then you had other highly energetic kids, probably what Mr. Petrie was when he was a kid, that were just like bouncing and going crazy over that. It was just really, really fun to see. So I hope we bring more stuff like that.
What would ever make you think that?
I don't know.
Very good.
Thanks, Gary.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Eight point four, novel?
So that we.
We're already done that, yes. Okay. Okay, great. Okay, eight point five, board meeting discussion, Mr. Griffin?
Yes, as we talked about, Dr. Malone and Ms. Floyd also was in that discussion. What I'd like to propose is that we start our board meetings at five thirty instead of seven. I don't know if that's possible with your work schedules. That's why we wanted to talk about it tonight. It seems like when we do things like this and we have discussions, when change is really happening, the next thing you know, it's ten thirty at night, and everybody's exhausted. It'd be nice to be able to start at five thirty, perhaps do work session first, and then go straight into business section. So perhaps it'd be a little easier, perhaps, and what the positive to that is that with our staff, with our administrators, teachers, if we want people to come to these meetings, they're able to come in right after work, and we're able to keep them here much easier. And I also think from a parent's perspective, we may increase our attendance, because a lot of times, what happens is by the time people get home, they can't get back. So it's something to think about. I've talked to several districts that do it, and they find a lot of times it'll work better for board members, but again, it all depends on your work schedules.
On initial thoughtless.
I don't know, as a, as a parent of kid who's, kids who's running things and thinking about people coming, and I've mentioned it to some of the community members that come, that's a difficult, and I know we're not just gearing it off of community members, but that definitely, if we're looking at that piece of it, that would make, I think it would definitely decrease community involvement, just because of.
Yeah.
Well, and that's what I said, we're not necessarily gearing it off of that, but he mentioned that as part of, that would be a plus. I don't think that would be a plus, that would be a con to it.
Well, and something else to think about, when we have these meetings till ten, we strive to be transparent, so Mr. Pennell uploads these, and sometimes it's. strive to be transparent, so Mr. Pennell uploads these and sometimes it's eleven-thirty, midnight before they get uploaded. And by six AM, when we look back, we'll have twenty, thirty people that's already watched the board meetings. So, it's, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes and in-front-of-scenes.
Me, if I started earlier, you think we'd get fewer people? From the community, but fair.
But, but there's not a lot.
We can always try, is track our attendance and see if it makes a difference. I just wanted to throw it out.
I don't think, I'm for it, but I have a evening meeting, so, but I, 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 I mean, all you can do is try it and see, but I don't think we'd get fewer than what we have now. We don't really get that many, even regular.
You're saying we're not important, the few of us that were there.
No. I just practice on a reason for people to have to come to these meetings sometimes. I've looked through that.
I think it would be awesome to get more people to see that kind of. I think that's, it's a shame we can't, but I think, so I, my experience being a second time with the board is we don't get many people because they know these meetings go on and they're afraid to come and because they're going to get, they're going to stay here. But I think if you started earlier, you would get more people come. But I'm, I'm good either way. Whatever you want to do in front of me.
There are days it would be difficult. It certainly depend on what was going on. From a work perspective, the time might be a little difficult. I mean, I don't know if, I guess, part of the benefit was having it to the five-thirty, you catch the administrators and they're in here. I suppose by like six o'clock, that'd be.
No, that's fine too.
I'm just wondering if maybe that extra half hour makes like a little bit.
An hour earlier would go a long way.
Right, I mean, if that's maybe a happy evening. Five-thirty is pushing it, maybe eating during the work session. But six, I mean, allows for a little, that, that might be a little.
I agree.
Let's break the order, your orders, probably.
I like the idea.
I have a few, but I can't promise.
Oh, I mean, because of your work schedule.
It's also my husband's work schedule that requires me to do things. So, there's a second piece here that state home moms also have to care.
I'm willing to try, you know, six o'clock. My global concern is the fact that they run too long. I mean, globally speaking, and maybe it's just me, but I run out of seat time and after two hours of a meeting, I think that we don't do justice to items that we discuss and act on after two hours. So, you know, whether it's start at six and be over eight, or start at seven and be over nine, I can do either one and I'm willing to try. I would just like to see the beginning and ending time be two hours. Just, it just, I don't want to rush things through, but I think historically, what's happened is whatever is on the agenda early, we spend a great deal of time on. And what's on the agenda near the end, we kind of rush through and don't give it due diligence. So, that's my bigger concern.
Which is usually the work session. Right, so we would put the work session first.
Work session, executive sessions, you know, so whatever happens to be. So, now, if we, if we try to six o'clock, we're talking about doing the work session then from six to, six to seven, is that?
However long it takes, we try to just, you know, get it all done. Sometimes we'll have more. And the nice thing about having work session first is if a board member runs into a snag or one of us run into a snag, there's nothing you can vote on. So, there is some flexibility. Well, Joe, you both brought a good point, so. Is it worth a try?
Yeah.
For us to change the board agenda, we have to bring, we have to change the policy because our policy states, and it's since it's a bylaw, it's a four of you have to vote yes to be able to change it. It's a board majority vote to change the board agenda. That's a big deal. So, we'll work with Dr. Malone and work through an example of that, maybe get it emailed out to all of you to perhaps vote on that at the next meeting. And then, the following week, perhaps change the time. Does that work?
Yeah, I think so.
I think with that, I hear what you're saying, Dr. Malone, with the time. It goes back to my last concern at the last meeting, though. If we're not having a time that we're regularly meeting to discuss with our goal study, things like that, I just am concerned that we're going to be too rushed to really get down into some core of things, into the core of some things. So, I guess I just wouldn't want there to be a cutoff limit to it when there's some things that we really need to dig in deeper and that they need extra time, you know, whether it's a presentation from the high school or whatever, that we're trying to stay within a time limit and then we can't really get what we need to, or they feel like they're limited of what they can present and trying to keep them at. Especially, I think that also goes to support that we need some time as a, as a unit to do some planning if we're going to try to limit the time.
But it feels like some of that I've done on the front end in terms of what choose to put up the agenda, particularly with some of the work session items. We have some flexibility, right, to sort of stage one certain conversations. I'm just, so, I can see both sides of it. I appreciate the need the conversation, but I also appreciate, you know, the energy wanes when you've been sitting for three hours and maybe shortchanging a very important subject. So, I mean, and I think you've done a pretty good job of this so far, but maybe that's something we can continue to just be cognizant of, because you guys are setting the agenda to make sure we have a manageable amount, that we're not sort of going to three, four hours, that we have enough there and we can really dive into it if necessary.
Well, quite frankly, from a superintendent's standpoint, the treasurer's standpoint, I hope to speak for the operations side, like tonight, the presentation we had technically, I don't have to bring those. I mean, I can make all kinds of changes and then just ask for recommendations. The negative side to that is when I do that, if there's a community uproar, you're left in the dark as to why. So, you know, I've worked in four different districts and two of those, Preston, Lakota, they always had the work session beforehand. It wasn't necessarily public. That was something the former board institute, which I agree, whatever we discuss should be in public. If you talk about it, then you go into the business section. So, our typical board meeting that most districts do that people see is the business portion. Usually takes forty-five minutes. The work session part, a lot of districts do that differently and most of them have a two-hour time limit just on the work session portion. And that's where, it really depends on the flair of the board. If they want to know these types of things going, that's going on or not. So, it's, it's really, we're getting familiar with working with you, so it's just more of what you would like to see and what you would like to see. I can play it either way.
When I see that presentation tonight, I just think it's awesome for the community to see what's happening here. They need to see that's amazing stuff that's happening in our schools. They need to see what teachers independently did on their own and what our kids are benefiting. So, personally, I wouldn't want to take that element out of board meetings. I think that's a really critical piece in communication. And one of the goals we were talking about today was community engagement. I think that's a, that's a big piece. You talked about how many hits we get on our YouTube. That's the way we communicate with some of our community members that will never come here, but they'll watch it on TV.
But I would like to say this, I, I appreciate Dr. Malone's trust in us, that he's not saying every little thing we have, "I've looked through that." So, but my caution to you is from an advising standpoint, is you could get caught not knowing certain things. But I appreciate the trust and respect to allow us to do our job and so does the staff on it. So, we'll just work through it. I thought you liked that tonight. It is so, it is so neat. And things like that, I just think if we can adjust the time a little bit, we'll all have a little more energy. Let me tell you, I'll fill it back myself. So, nonetheless, thank you for entertaining the thought.
Very good. Okay, are there other items that we need to discuss at this time? If not, any board member comments? Mr. Spicki, you can start the queue.
I've got nothing.
You have nothing? Okay. Mr. Blazey?
I have nothing really, sort of, until I know they're not here anymore, but I just again, want to thank the folks that were involved with Borough Fest. I unfortunately did not have a chance to attend last July, we were out of town. So, I'm looking forward to hopefully getting there this year, but I appreciate all the effort and thanks for that. And again, just want to thank Mr. Miller, just the Makerspace program, again, I can't say enough good things about it, and Marvel and experience, and really interested to, you know, to have some of the discussion about it, that is in the weekends for the institute more broadly, just as you saw from the numbers there. Unfortunately, because the way it's structured now, it is somewhat limiting and there's clearly a demand for that type of, you know, that type of learning environment. So, I just really hope that we can find a way to, it needs all those that are interested.
I think one of the things that Jamie and I bring that's a little bit different to the board is the fact that we had kids in district, so we hear different things than what you would if you don't have a kid in district. And this week, it was really cool. Somebody stopped me at church on Sunday and they had, they had two kids that go to a private school and one that goes here to Clear Creek because of special needs. And to hear her, anybody that has a student with special needs knows that the day that you have to go through your ETR or your IUP is like the worst day of the year. And to hear her experience was amazing, absolutely amazing. She said that she had a therapist that came in to represent her daughter that goes in, because she has some home therapy also. She goes in and she had, actually has nine different districts that she goes in and represents. She said, "I have never been to an ETR meeting that has been so well-run and that has had their ducks in a row and has taken care of their children like you guys do in Springboro." So, to hear that was just so encouraging. And I know that a lot of times, we hear the negatives with things and to have this parent who is not a Springboro, you know, all of her kids are not in Springboro, not because there was problems, it's just they believe in private education. But to have her daughter taken care of and she is just, I hear her telling people all the time about Mrs. Trainer and what an amazing teacher she is and how much she cares and loves her and how much, because she's had her for two years now, how much of a difference she's made in her life. And so, it's just cool to know that even in the most difficult of situations, that our kids are being taken care of like that. And I don't know, so I just think it's important that we see some of that too during the, some of those tough days, that we aren't hearing the good news, that we've got some really good things happening and parents are talking about that too. And also, so today at the goal-stating meeting, the other thing, here's, here's the other thing that I appreciate. I appreciate the fact that as a district, as administration team, administrative team, we're not sticking our heads in the sand and ignoring any issues that we have in the district. We have a lot of amazing, amazing things that are happening here. And then, we have some areas that are deficit areas that we need to work on. And we could look at the chart where we're at the top across the board and even districts that are spending eighteen thousand dollars on one child, or, you know, per child, we are above them in this one grade. We could just look at that and say, "Aren't we amazing?" But instead, we're celebrating that and we're looking at the areas where we need help so that we can also say, "Okay, we put resources over here and we brought all of our scores up. Our kids are getting so much more." And I'm also hearing from parents over there that are benefiting from that, saying, "My kids never made a jump in reading like this." So, now, we're looking and saying, "Okay, we've got some areas over here. What are we going to do different?" That is awesome to me. I don't take that as a negative for our district. This is a positive, that we've identified what our issues are and where we need to give some extra help. So, I just say thank you to all of you guys that have chosen to take this on and not ignore that we've got some areas that we need to work on. So, thank you for that.
Very good. Tranch?
I told Mr. Petrie that I committed a tariff for the support and all the administrative staff for that meeting this morning, but it's not, I'm not sure that happens everywhere and especially when, and, and it just, I think it indicates your confidence in yourself and what you're trying to do, to have five bosses there observe for two hours, the interactions that you have with your administrative staff and, you know, it's not everybody would do that. So, yeah, I think that was the lines of what Lisa said, but I was impressed. Very nice. Joe?
Okay, again, everything I was going to say has been said. It was a very positive meeting this morning. And again, I think it certainly, it is speaks volumes in fact that all five board members were there, taking time off work in many cases to, to be involved in this process. Again, I.
I'd also like to thank all of you. I mean, to have all five board members show up at eight AM meeting that lasted until ten, you know, it never really crossed my mind. I mean, I realize all of you are my bosses, but at the same time, we're a team. And the things that we can do for Springboro kids with your final decisions, I really don't think Springboro has seen yet. And I think getting there, it's just the things that the teachers are inspired by, it's great for kids and it excites me and it's this job we're doing. So, thank you for bringing their, I really do.
Very good. Okay, any other future considerations, public announcements? Okay, so, then item twelve point one, executive session, to consider the appointment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion or compensation of a public employer official. Matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulation or state statute. So, is there a motion to win the executive session? Mr. Anderson, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Yes.
Mr. Anderson? Yes.
The motion passes five oh. We appreciate your attendance this evening. There will be any action following the executive session.